Yeah, all right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting of the King William County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Branch, can you call the roll, please?
Here. 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 Here.
Here. If everyone could rise and join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its strength. Thank you. Gentlemen, we have review and adoption of the meeting agenda. We do have amended agenda in front of us. If no one has any other changes, though, I will entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
A motion to, I'll make a motion to adopt. Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we come to public comment period. One opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. If you are representing a group, please state so before you begin speaking. And please state your name and the district in which you reside regardless. For anybody online that wishes to, to have public comment, we'll allow that as well. Please send a message to the King William County account. Ms. Branch will get you into queue. We'll do a one-minute call on that while we allow anybody that is in the audience to have a minute to speak. So I will now open the public comment period. Good evening.
Good evening. By the way, I found out the best of managers way has to be no lower than seventeen feet when it was drawn man underneath it. All the new equipment up there is sixteen feet. So we're gonna have a terrible issue. And also up there in the county, in one of the fields where cable was, it started dropping in the sea. Just like this. All right, and that night in my home bureau basement, there's a meeting. My state agency man was telling us one of the places that he worked where the cable was trapped left with the electric. Guys a lot of happens with Jerry's phone because of the paddles into the things that look down. So this could be a serious problem going on. My next question, I'm just Mr. Greenwood, he's part of the state highway department, what he does. Question, you see on the books, if I want people to help find it, if it still lives, the Johnson grass cornered me. They used to frame a piece of stuff down my way to Beverly's, didn't you? Side of the road, I go downstairs, just all cornered me. Only way I'm framed is myself, but it's a hazard with the people on the road. So I know it used to be on the books, I don't know if it would be on the books. I don't know if you can find out, but I would like to have a go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Do we have anybody online, Ms. Branch? Okay. Kitty?
Yesterday, I was down there and I did not see him. I had a friend who knew, so I was not interviewed by her specifically and and so it was just some activated, so it was something that no one can say that has those things to change. Uh, you know. I'm not, you know, I'm not and not able to handle this, this one. Uh, you know, my none of this thing comes back in. But I most of all, they didn't like them. I did send another application, but I'm running cancellation. But I don't know if they did that. The severs. Which I don't understand the universe. Looking around, it's happening. Well, I was calling by the county.
All right, well, I believe we'll be discussing this a little later on in the meeting. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Well, right, that's okay. So, you know, typically during public comments, it's time for, for, you know, you guys to bring concerns to us. We do have, I think, a specific agenda item to address your specific concern tonight. So we'll be, we'll be talking about it here shortly. Good evening.
I'm in trouble. I think it's going down. I support the town with crafting a revised version of updated conference and plan. That's great, you know, supports the rural character of the local town, including agriculture. King William is rich in history and literacy, however, from support for general tourism seems to be that out of the old plan. As a King William County business owner offering combination recreational and camping, I come to a daily speaking and lodging and escape the pressures upon our life. Most of my guests travel at two-hour radius, two-hour radius, I guess, usually. But this week I've had guests from Soto, Miss Moray, New York. These tourists purchase tools, food, and services from their local businesses, strengthening our local economy. My guests are always asking about the security of the location, and I can answer this on hand full on activity, aid that's trying to use business to our town. A current ordinance proposal limits the number of petting rabbits brought to five per site and accounted with no commercial or federal, this is how the government and likely direct via certified by my adjacent people names. My neighbors have slander, code, and ritual mechanism that's their own, bias, prank, and cynicism on occasions of fear. My stores, uh, guests have experienced physical threats and hatred from the very sake of the visuals that have found the subject here in this county court. With one part-time neighbor, a Maryland resident, twice convicted King William County court, seeks to lie, exaggerate, and complain in her way to the hearts and minds of the stores of this county, all while hiding behind their names, phones, or uses. No home addresses, no names, no signatures, just complaints and directors. Unfortunately, it's not the whining about my specific business issues with a neighbor, but look at the bigger picture and find unique characteristics, unique properties, unique individuals, personalities throughout the county that makes King William County a standalone gem and a sea of statewide jewels. Only coming government to do this by supporting the driving of plan. King William must be about raising diversity of all of thought, diversity of action, diversity of place. It's these concepts that will hold into the next generation, creating counties prosperous for all, residents, neighbors, and residents more.
Thank you, Ms. Branch.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Ms. Branch, do we have anybody online? All right, well, let's hear that for ten minutes.
Did you want me to unmute?
Yes, we have you now.
I'm sorry, um, I'm having a really hard time hearing anybody at the podium and there's an awful whistling sound. I'm not able to actually write in to say that there's an issue with the sound. That, that's all I had to say.
I did hear some type of repeating noise coming from somewhere, but it's not.
It's not from y'all.
Right, it's not obtuse in the room. Can you, Ms. Bancroft, can you hear the board members, okay?
I can, I can hear you all just fine, but I, I've not been able to hear anything anybody said at the podium.
Let me test that microphone and see.
Not really, no. Not really, no.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not coming through our speakers in here either.
No. I can hear that you're saying something, but not through that microphone that you're holding.
All right, let's think. Um. Just looking at the agenda, the presentations will be from Ms. Funkhauser and Mr. Reeves, right? Because we could get them up here. Just get them between Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Hodges. Is that okay with y'all? Okay, all right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna overcome that, that little technical difficulty there as best we can, Ms. Bancroft. Thanks for pointing it out.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. Anyone else in the room wish to speak during public comment?
Oh, no.
Might have it going.
Sounds like it.
Okay.
You hear that?
Well, she just muted. Just for safety's sake, we'll go ahead and continue with the plan that we had. All right, so if there's no one else wishing to speak, I will close the public comment period. All right. Consent agenda. If there are no changes to be noted in the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So move.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we get to old business, which is resolutions twenty-one dash fifty-five and twenty-one dash fifty-six, establishing procedures for delinquent applications for real property tax relief. Ms. Funkhauser will be handling that. So if you want to come up to the dais, join us up here so that you can be heard. And you can come around and sit.
Oh, that's cool.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as you heard, I've been contacted by a citizen who failed to submit her certification for elderly tax relief by the March first deadline. She would qualify for the tax relief, but the local ordinance seventy dash one oh four only allows for hardship cases in accordance with procedures established by the board. I have not been able to locate any procedures by the board. Resolution twenty-one fifty-five has very specific procedures, you know, they have to write an explanation. You know, I can adjust the bill, and if they don't like it, they can appeal to the board. The second resolution is just very specific that allows me to accept a hardship cases during a period of time when the governor's declared a state of emergency. If you approve the second, the resolution twenty-one dash fifty-six and allow me to help this citizen, and the board may discuss the procedures and establish more at a later time, just adding to this resolution or revoking it and creating a new one.
Okay, any thoughts or opinions, gentlemen?
Like I said, since the lady was in my district, she has been calling me, and I've been trying to work with her, and I've forwarded to Steve and Ms. Funkhauser, but we haven't. Like I said, since we didn't have anything on the books, it was hard for us to do it. And she was under the impression that we talked about it in our closed session, but it was just sort of generality. So I told her that we would try to bring it up specifically, and Ms. Funkhauser took care of that. So that's why we're hoping to do that now. I fully agree with doing this with, with the lady.
All right, well, my, my inclination would be to opt for resolution twenty-one dash fifty-five, which would establish. Or you, now, let me, let me be clear. Do you, are you looking for us to adopt one or the other, or both?
Both.
One or the other, I mean, if you adopt the fifty-five, that's fine.
That would seem to solve the problem that fifty-six solves, right?
Yes, but see, you might want other procedures. You know, I just put this together quickly to have something, and I thought this would be a basis for your discussion to adopt procedure. If you're fine with that, these procedures and fifty-five, then that's fine, just adopt that one. If you want to think about it, you may have other thoughts, you could adopt fifty-six, and we can help this citizen.
Right.
And we could go back and, you know, change it.
Has the county attorney reviewed the?
Pardon?
Has the county attorney reviewed this yet?
No.
Fifty-five, no, okay. Well, then, um, okay. Then perhaps the most appropriate thing to do would be to adopt fifty-six, and then we'll hash out fifty-five and make sure that everything's performed.
Can we, can, who, uh, can we adopt twenty-one fifty-six without the county attorney looking at that? Also?
No.
Doesn't he need to look at that also?
It's a resolution, not a ordinance. Since a resolution has you to set procedures for what you do delinquent applications.
I mean, a simple resolution, you could revoke it at your next meeting, and in the meantime, I've helped this citizen.
Right.
I mean, so I don't know that if there is something wrong with that, it'd be great consequences if the wording is not exactly correct, and you have the attorney look at it and change it.
So, what are you saying, we need to adopt fifty, twenty-one fifty-six and let Andrew look at twenty-one fifty-five? Or, or what are you saying?
We can do either way.
Oh, okay.
The, 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 the question is, are we more comfortable having Andrew look at it, or are we fine with what we have here? Honestly, because again, this has been pointed out, it's a resolution, it's not an ordinance. So it's, you know, it's within our purview one way or another. So, um.
I mean, I would like to say I don't think that this happens very frequently. So, you know, maybe one applicant a year.
So Andrew is not with us.
Right, so then the point is, we, we agree that we want to adopt one of these two resolutions so that we can give this taxpayer some relief, right? There's no, there's no disagreement there that I detect at all. Okay, very good. So then the question is, do we want to go ahead and adopt twenty-one fifty-five that would establish the procedures that would allow her to grant this relief? And pretty much make it a permanent procedure? Or do we want to grant a temporary procedure while we review the permanent procedure? Now, we've got state code citation in here, so this is, this is back about what's allowed in state code, twenty-one fifty-five, right? So that's really, if it comes out state code, then there's only no issue.
Well, that's due to twenty-one fifty-five.
Right, and that way it's, that way it's, it's permanent, we don't have to worry about.
And if it's something is wrong with it, we can.
If y'all agree, that the next one.
I'm, I'm fine with that. We've got the state code citation that we need. I trust that Ms. Funkhauser's done her research perfectly.
I had a question, Ms. Funkhauser, do we have an affidavit, or did someone tell them incorrectly?
You know, but the way the U.S. Postal Service is, I can't say that Ms. Pearson mailed the affidavit, affidavit or not. And we have a taxpayer who didn't receive eighty-four real estate tax bills. You know, but they were mailed.
But the affidavit exists.
Yeah, we, we have affidavits, and you can download them from the website. You know, if it was mailed, I have no idea.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we accept twenty-one fifty-five.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Hearing done, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Ms. Funkhauser, would you mind talking to the lady, explaining to her if she don't, anything she doesn't understand? And making sure she, where we go, where they, where we all.
Well, she's next. You left too quickly, Karina.
She has to get a, she probably have a pick for it.
Oh, you did your presentation.
Can I go back on that?
Yeah, come back.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I will start with reporting good news. For the period January through June two thousand twenty-one, my office has assessed eighty-eight new dwellings, adding seventeen point nine million to the real estate tax rolls. This will bring in at least an additional hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in real estate tax revenue. I'll provide the exact amount once my office has fully transitioned to the admin software. For the entire year of two thousand twenty, the county and town issued a hundred and thirty-nine certificates of occupancy. If the building pace stays the same for the remainder of the year, the result will be a twenty-five percent increase from this citizen certificates of occupancies for two, from two thousand twenty. The past spring, I addressed the board and informed them about my work on the real estate ratio study that I was required to repair, prepare for the Department, Virginia Department of Taxation. Every spring, the Commissioner of Revenue's office is required to complete the study, which compares the assessed value of real estate to its sales price. The ratio determines the amount of money the state gives the county for its schools. As the period between each general reassessment increases, the ratio decreases, and the county schools receive less money from the state. I do not know how this funding is calculated, so I cannot report on how much money is lost. When I submitted the study and closed the letter to Roger Compton at the Virginia Tax Department explaining the county's problems with rail states since July two thousand twenty, and Mr. Compton allowed me to exclude a hundred and fifty-six new construction sales from the study. However, despite these efforts, the county ratio will decrease from seventy-nine point one percent to sixty-seven point two percent this year. This is the lowest ratio in the entire state. About one month ago, when the auditors were here, I provided an auditor with assessment information on the public service corporations. Railroads are assessed by the Virginia Department of Taxation. Electric, gas, and telephone companies are assessed by the State Corporation Commission. After reviewing the assessment from Norfolk Southern Railway Corp., I contacted David Say at the Virginia Department of Taxation. On slide one, you can see the property of Norfolk Southern, the fair market value in two thousand twenty is assessed at five million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. But the county can only tax the value at seventy-nine point one percent, which is four million three hundred and two thousand, over one million dollars less. I confirm with Mr. Say that the public service corporation values provided by the State Corporation Commission were already reduced by the ratio. Slide number two shows the assessment value of public service corporations down there at the bottom at forty-one million six hundred and eleven thousand. If the county ratio was a hundred percent, the assessed value would be fifty-two point six million dollars. Slide three shows how much money the county lost since the general reassessment was postponed from two thousand nineteen. When I show this slide, keep in mind that one cent on the real estate tax rate generates approximately a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in revenue based on just the county rate and does not include the town. The loss for two thousand twenty-one is an estimate based on this assumption that the assessed value for the public service corporation remains the same as the previous year. Slide four shows how important real estate taxes to the county. For the last three fiscal years, real estate tax accounted forty-seven percent of the county budget on average. Real estate is not only important as a revenue source, but it is also a measurement that can attract business or residents to the county. Slide five shows the real estate tax rate for King William and the surrounding counties. If one assumes a two-point-five percent annual average increase in real estate values or a twenty percent increase over the past eight years, the counties and the county's real estate assessments reflected this increase, the county could lower its real estate rate to seventy-two cents per hundred. So I know the county is in the process of hiring a new administrator, and I just want to stress the importance of hiring an administrator with reassessment experience. The county must have a successful reassessment to take effect on January first, two thousand twenty-three. With that said, I recommend the board form a committee to create a public relations plan to communicate to the citizens, citizens of King William County the importance of the reassessment, and that a better assessment does not mean higher taxes. I have discussed this briefly with Mr. Hodges, but this effort is not something I can undertake by myself. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Funkhauser?
Well. You mentioned seventy-two cents per hundred.
Yeah.
Is, that would be, you know, the board prior to what happened with this reassessment, we, I guess we had agreed in principle to equalize the rate. Maybe one, uh, increase in it one cent, which we could do without, without public hands, correct?
So, no, that was just one percent of the total revenue, and that's, that's what we had in principle stated was our desire, was to just equalize the rate.
Equalize the rate, yeah, okay. So where's that?
Well, that's, when you canceled the reassessment, that was only for six years. Now we're looking at eight years.
Right.
So like, in the last eight years, the revenue, the assessments have increased on average by twenty percent. So you take, and this is just the county portion, I didn't mess with the town numbers. You could lower the real estate tax for the county from eighty-six cents to seventy-two percent if all the real estate in the county increases by twenty percent. That would be like the equalization.
It's basically her forecast of what equalizing would be if assessments came out that way.
The public utilities, railways, that, that you've mentioned. The county doesn't control the, uh, this reassessment.
No, we get the assessment values from the Department of Taxation and the State Corporation Commission, but those values are reduced by our ratio.
So where do we get at the, the figure that we can only tax at seventy-nine percent of the value?
The sales ratios, huh?
Oh, the ratios, huh?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So it comes from that, okay? All right. That's all. Just need to understand.
Right, right, well, um, you know. We know that we've, we've got to get this, uh, we've got to get this done, right?
I mean, I just, you know, when I had to provide the railroad assessments to the auditor, and I'm looking at it, and I'm looking at the seventy-nine percent, and then I'm looking at the State Corporation, I had to confirm, have these already been reduced? That's a lot of money. You know, and the next year, it's going to be even worse. You know, and the next year, it's going to be even worse.
I think everybody up here agrees with you. And we're doing.
I mean, I didn't know if y'all, if y'all knew how it affected, that ratio affected the public service corporation assessments.
I did not know.
Yeah. I didn't know until the auditors, I mean, I actually looked at it.
So once we do get a good assessment, then our ratio will go up.
On the last slide, I think I show what the ratios were.
The, the ideal ratio is 100.
Yeah, so in 2015, on our last reassessment, the ratio was 100%. 2016, 97%. 2017, 94.8, then 88.3, so.
Precipitous drop.
Yeah.
Even more precipitous this year with, what real estate's doing. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I do agree with Ms. Funkhauser that we should strongly consider forming some sort of panel, commission, advisory group, whatever we want to call it.
Right, I, I think we've always agreed with, with the idea of having that, that body set up. I think we just, we're, we're trying to understand what the right time would be, since we don't have a firm contract yet.
Certainly, certainly educating the public much, much better than was done before
Right.
is, is necessary this time around.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be even more increasing a lot, vast majority of.
Right, well then, well then, why don't we go ahead and get out ahead of this and start, start taking the steps now to formulate what the responsibilities of that committee will be and start recruiting members for that committee? So why don't we go ahead, it, it looks like we probably will not convene back here in the, the August work session due to some, some travel from some board members, but as soon as practical, have that on the agenda to be discussed. All right, okay. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hodges, resolution 21-62, rescinding of local emergency due to COVID-19.
For your consideration, for approval, the state, the governor allowed the state of emergency for the state to expire as of June 30th, 21. And I would like to follow suit and rescind the local state of emergency.
Mr. Hodges, any ramifications that you can think of?
Not that would affect our county. We have no grant money tied up in the state of emergency that is in place right now.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions about it? All right, did not?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to pass resolution 21-62.
All right. So, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Aye. All right, anything under administrative matters that you'd like to highlight?
Nothing.
Okay, four comments. We'll start with Mr. Hodges.
I hope we are expeditious in, in getting this thing squared away, dealing with the road state. I know it didn't come up all too good. If the folks are, if even one are hurting trying to pay this, we need to work this quickly. You go talk to it, correct? Other than that, I, and mostly of what you just rescinded, I know I got some questions in here. Is just in this building or just taking the emergency part away?
It's taking the emergency part out for, state of emergency for the county. It's not just this building. But it doesn't change any of the protocols for the building, next door. This is just.
That's where I was talking about, next door.
This, this is purely calling a state of emergency gives the government more powers.
Right, especially, especially resources from the state. If we were not to be in a state of emergency and were to incur expenses.
What I was talking about is dealing with the protocol and court system.
That's still in place.
Yeah, it's different. And other than that, that's about all I have.
Very good. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes, I was glad we went over, Ms. Funkhauser went over for the things that we went over for the citizens. Like we said, it had been going on for a little while, and it had been past the date when the lady was supposed to get her bills, so that was good that we got that taken care of. Looks like we have a few people here tonight, not too many people online like we normally do, so just, I don't know. People forgot about the meaning, but, plus people on vacation, yeah, vacations, so. I know that COVID is kind of, well, for here, might be gone. I don't know, here it's coming back, so I'm just hoping we don't get it to come back, so. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and thank you, Ms. Funkhauser, for taking care of that for the constituent.
Mr. Moore?
I just wanted to highlight, I, I consider it a milestone. Tomorrow, we will be submitting our letter of intent to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to apply for VADI grants, Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. We've, we've got two ISPs, Atlantic Broadband and Allpoint Broadband, are willing to work with us to build, they're calling it ubiquitous broadband fiber to the home. I'm really looking forward to working with both of them and anyone else who wishes to, to help or support. We've come a long way from 2016 when we started this. We've got people fighting to build broadband for us, so. We'll, Mr. Hodges, we'll shoot that out tomorrow morning, or whenever you feel like it, just by midnight tomorrow night, and we'll get planning.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, everybody online that participated. Rescinding the emergency order, just, I'd like to remind people, get vaccinated. If you think you're indestructible, do it for a loved one, do it for a family member, do it for an elderly person. The numbers are still increasing, and we certainly do not want to get back where we were to have to wear a mask everywhere we go. And Charlie, I appreciate your comments earlier. I do remember an email probably a couple of months ago that you had expressed concern about the overhead, some overhead lines that were, that were too close to the ground. I appreciate that.
Mr. Moore, remind me, have we, have we talked about Project Blossom since we signed that deal?
No, we, the announcement, the governor's announcement came out in the public media. It was broadcast to the county website, the country carrier. I believe the tide of water review. I don't, I don't get that subscription, so I don't know. But it's.
Right, but for anyone who, who hadn't seen any of that media material that went out, you know, we, we were able to announce a, a $182 million investment by Nestle Perina in their facility here in King William. That's a staggering investment, and it, it shows their commitment to being in this community for a long time. Came together with the hard work of, of our staff. The former leadership of the MVA, Mr. Warren, who helped really drive that, that home, and Ms. Funkhauser did a lot of work on that as well, mapping out how we were going to make that work for the company. So it's something that we're excited about, and it's a, it's a pretty big deal, honestly. So, you know, it, it, it does prove that while there are things we could do better, King William is open for business, and we are seen by big clients as an attractive place to do business. So I think it's a good, it's a good message to have, and it's a good thing to have had happen, and so I'm very, very happy for it. Echoing Mr. Garber's comments, yes, please remember that, that none of us are destructible. My family's fortunate to be vaccinated by now. I think everybody should have the opportunity to do so. I would encourage you to do so. My mom's got a dear friend who's in ICU right now, probably about to go in a ventilator because she was hard-headed, didn't want to do it. So now we hope they can save her so she can think better of it. But yeah, just, anyone who's hasn't, just remember, it's still out there, so be careful. With that, I think we've got a motion to go into closed session, right?
Mr. Moore, go.
Find out.
I'm a little negligent. Hold on.
I think I've got it. Got it, but I'm.
Should be 2711A1, right?
Yeah.
You got it, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed session in accordance with section 2.237, 11A1 of the Code of Virginia. I move the Board of Supervising Convenient Close Session to consider personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions.
Good. Seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session. We'll be back in just a bit. All right, call this meeting back to order. Can I have a motion to reconvene the meeting in open session?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move to re-accept SR1.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to roll through these appointments here. So I will accept a motion to adopt resolution 21-57, appointing Brian Hodges to the Economic Development Authority for a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
I guess I can, aye.
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 Aye. I will accept a motion to adopt resolution 21-58, appointing W. Robert Robbie Barber Jr. to the Wetlands Board for a term expiring September 30th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Will accept a motion to adopt resolution 21-59, appointing Brian Johnson to the Wetlands Board for a term expiring September 30th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Aye, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution 21-60, appointing Reverend William Palmer to the Tri-Rivers BaySat Board of Directors.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Approval, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution 21-61R, appointing Otto O. Williams as the Citizen Rep to the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Branch?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to adopt resolution 21-63, appointing Dr. Andrea Persigan to the Rappahanna Community College Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Very good.
Second.
Ms. Branch?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
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 Aye. We are adjourned.
We have 4:85. Oh, my gosh. Neil, what am I going to do with all this?
Let's just key to the obvious word.